And one second, we'll be live. Okay, we're broadcasting.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 3rd Planning Board meeting. Before I even go through the agenda, I want to do a roll call because it's required that when we have a remote meeting, all participants be announced at the start. So I'm going to call roll at this point, and I'd like members to respond. Beth Delio.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
Yeah, I've got it, thank you. Leah McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tinter.
Here.
MJ Verdi.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here, and we have one board member absent, James Bruegger. And we also have Director of Planning, Andy Port, Planner Caitlin Sullivan, and our Note Taker, Linda Guthrie. I just wanted to note before we get started that the Planning Board members are on video, and we will stay on video as long as we don't have any technological problems with that. All right, let me go through the agenda, and then we'll get started. Our first public hearing is the Institution for Savings Site Plan Review. ITIF Special Permit and DoD Special Permit Continued from 5/20, when it was simply opened and continued. The second public hearing is the Daily Group, 8, 10, 12, and 18 Colby Farm Lane for a definitive subdivision site plan review, 6C Special Permit, and OSRD Special Permit. The third public hearing is Sports Medicine North Orthopedic Surgery, 20 Henry Graff Road, Major Site Plan Review and Special Permit. I just want to say on those two, we are going to be wrapping up with draft, review of draft decisions, final issues, and voting. After that, we have Dan and Judy Lynch at 342 Merrimack Street for a 6C Special Permit, which has been requested to be continued. The next one is K&amp;B Zampell Realty, 17 Malcolm Holt Road, Application Completeness Vote and Major Site Plan Review, also requesting to continue. And 3 Stanley Tucker Drive, Application Completeness Vote and Major Site Plan Review, also asked to be continued. There'll then be Approval of Minutes, other updates, and then two votes for authorization of digital signatures and endorsing of plans on behalf of the board due to our current situation of remote work and the COVID-19 restrictions on gathering. So that's the agenda for tonight. We will begin our first public hearing with the Institution for Savings, combined hearing on Site Plan Review, the ITIF Special Permit and DoD Special Permit. Let me begin by giving an overview of how we're going to get through all of the material and all of the comments. The plan is to have the applicant make the presentations, then to have the Newburyport Historic Commission make their comments, followed by public comment, which will be left open. But we will have public comment and just close it for this session, after which the Planning Board will have comments and discussion with the applicant, during which time, public comments and questions will be considered. Finally, we'll have, we believe anyway, some direction to send the applicant in and a vote to continue the hearing. So our expectation is not that that, those applications will be voted on tonight. So to get us started, I'll call on the applicant to begin with their presentation of revised plans since they were with us on February 19th.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mead, Mead Talam and Costa.
One second, I've got to echo.
Yeah, this is Andy Port. I would just ask that anybody who's not speaking, just shut off your mic temporarily, that'll just help to prevent echo. Attorney Mead.
Thank you very much. I think we're all set now, I apologize for that. Are you going to pull up the presentation, Andy?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. While you do that, Lisa Mead, Mead Talam and Costa, 30 Green Street in Newburyport, on behalf of the Institution for Savings at 93 State Street. With me this evening is Mike Jones, the President, Kim Rock, the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Chip Nutter, who's the architect on the project, Christopher Angelikas, who is the, and also an architect on the project, Ron Mueller, Traffic Engineer, Sean Fitch, City Lift, Charlie Ware, and Nick Betts, who are civil engineers, and Dr. Judith Selwyn, who is the Architectural Conservator and Historic Preservation Consultant. As the Chair indicated, we hear from Major Site Plan Review and the DoD Special Permit, we will be seeking to withdraw the ITIF Special Permit, so I'm not going to address that at this time. And we've already previously withdrawn the Shared Parking Special Permit. Given the passage of time and due to the pandemic, I just want to remind everybody where we are procedurally. The original application was filed for Site Plan Review and the ITIF Special Permit on January 8th. It was later determined by the Zoning Code Enforcement Officer that Historic Review and the DoD Special Permit were acquired, and they were filed simultaneously on January 22nd. There was an error in the parcels of the original notice, and a new set of applications were filed on February 13th. Matter was fully re-advertised on February 18th and February 25th for hearing on March 4th. Given the required passage of time from the Historic Review to the DoD Special Permit application, that matter was refiled on February 24th. Due to the pandemic, the applicant requested continuances, as the city requested, and a new application package was re-advertised in full on April 20th and April 27th for hearing on May 3rd, after which time the applicant has requested a continuous until tonight. I'd also like to address the assertion that the applicant must return to the Historic Commission, because the ordinance doesn't require that to occur. The applicant filed with the Historic Commission, and more than 30 days later filed again with the Planning Board. It's not unusual to have a matter reviewed by the Historic Commission and then later changed before it comes to the Planning Board. In fact, some would say that is exactly the purpose of the comments from the Historic Commission. It's therefore up to the Planning Board to take into consideration Historic Commission comments and the applicant's responses there, too. Next, there's been some comments with regard to how the parking numbers are calculated. And before I go through the presentation, I want to be clear, I want to clear the air on this issue as well. What was presented to the Board by Council for the Abutters is a baseless distraction and is not consistent with the requirements of the Newburyport Ordinance. Section 7A of the ordinance governing off-street parking, which was amended in 2017, clearly states that no use of the premises shall be authorized or extended, and no building or structure shall be erected or enlarged unless onsite or offsite parking is provided for such extension, erection, or enlargement. That's exactly what the applicant is doing. The intent of the ordinance is clear that the parking calculations apply to the extension of the use of building, but not the existing use or building. This clear interpretation is applied by the Zoning Code Enforcement Officer and this Planning Board on numerous occasions since the adoption of the ordinance. Of course, to apply it any other way would wreak havoc on the downtown, which is considerable, which has considered for years to use parking on the municipal lots, which has been the application of the prior ordinance. Therefore, I would suggest this is a red herring, and it has been dealt with. The record includes the approval of the Zoning Code Enforcement Officer in February of the parking requirement calculation for this property, and as the resulting proposed addition. So here we are for Major Site Plan Review and a DoD Special Permit. The city's peer review engineer and fire department have reviewed the updated plans and have advised the Board of all of their comments that have been addressed. The institution proposes to construct a two-story addition to the rear of the property, which will attach to the 1980 addition. The first floor will be used for stacked parking, the second floor for bank offices. The proposed addition, which was first before this Board, is attached, as I said, to the 1980 addition, and is approximately 188 feet away from State Street, and just over 100 feet away from the 1871 historic structure. The 1871 building is 32 feet 5 and 1/2 inches in height. The proposed addition is 29 feet 8 and 3/8 inches in height. The original building is listed, as you know, on the district data sheets and is part of the Newburyport Historic District. The property is 36,998 square feet in area and is located in the B2 zoning district and the downtown Orly district. It's located at the corner of State and Prospect Street and enjoys a total frontage of 491 feet along both streets. There are currently 23 employees on the property, and the petitioner is increasing that number to 30. The new space is meant to provide accommodations for staff supporting bank operations. The property currently has 36 spaces, and the due addition will acquire 58 spaces, and 59 are being provided. Importantly, 12, the 12 surface spaces currently used for customers will remain, and an additional 47 spaces will be accommodated in the building racking system. Following our initial meeting with the Historic Commission and this Board, the bank also took time to meet with city staff and a working group to carefully consider the feedback it had received to date. As a result of all of the input, the bank has painstakingly addressed the issues raised in its new design, while at the same time obtaining additional space it needs for the success of its business. All required parking is now provided on-site and in accordance with the Board's performance standards. The addition is smaller and gross square footage than originally proposed, and is 25 feet shorter along Prospect Street than originally proposed. The design of the structure has changed dramatically by incorporating textural changes, new colors, reduced massing, incorporation of fenestrations and openings consistent with both the original bank building, as well as being reflective of the design patterns of the residential portion of the neighborhood. Consistent with the Historic Commission comments, the bank has introduced vertical and horizontal interruptions in contrast in color and materials. Importantly, a number of design elements, including the coins, the use of brownstone in the lentils and sills, the base and the top along, and the use of copper, and the window patterns, do more than give a nod, as the Historic Commission noted, for those important elements of the 1870 building. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Ware and Nick Betts of Meridian Associates to review the site plan, including the proposed landscaping.
Good evening, can you hear me all right?
We sure can.
Okay. The first sheet, which we just jumped over, was obviously was the, I'll just walk through the sheets, yeah, it's really just an orientation of the site, it's an aerial. State Street is to the northwest, Prospect Street to the north, and Otis Place to the southeast, and then the residential neighbors on Garden Street to the south. If you could move to the next sheet. This sheet shows it, unfortunately, at this scale, it doesn't show up very well. The, the intention of the hatching within the paved surface there, which is jumping out at us right now, is just to, to show that that, that pavement is to be removed, and then on later sheets, that pavement gets replaced, although in the rear, there's the proposed building. So the, so the existing building is shown on this, this is existing conditions, the existing building is shown to the south of the lot, and then the parking lot is in the northwest and southeast of the site. Yeah, that's, and this is actually, this is the next sheet. This is a layout sheet, also shows, shows the proposed, the proposed building to the rear of the site, as well as the, the parking spaces within the, within the footprint of that building. It also shows the proposed subsurface detention basin, and I'll talk about that briefly. The drainage on this site, we met early on with the, with the city engineer, knowing that we were subject to the, to the city's local stormwater bylaw, where this was a redevelopment project, it wasn't clear exactly, you get into gray areas on, on how best to interpret that bylaw for existing conditions. So we met, we met with the city engineer who gave us good direction, and based upon that direction, we, and, and also the knowledge he gave us that there are drainage problems that exist in State Street. We were able to design a drainage system on the site that meets the city's stormwater bylaws, as well as the MASTEP stormwater regulations. We've done that by capturing all of the drainage from all the impervious surfaces, the buildings and the pavement, through catch basins and roof drains, and directing that into a proposed subsurface detention facility, which will be under the parking. We've also incorporated a number of WOTAC units, which provide for improvements to the water quality before it empties into the town drainage system. With those stormwater facilities in place, we're able to mitigate for a, for a slight increase of overall impervious surface on the site, and, and reduce the flows that go out into State Street. I believe we were about 25% decrease in overall flow, which was a request of the, the city engineer. If we can move to the next sheet. And this sheet is actually the utility sheet, it shows more detail on that drainage facility that I just, that I just talked about, shows the catch basins and the, and the system itself. This, this site, this one also shows the, there's a, I know, there's two new sewer connections on Prospect Street, one is to carry the domestic sewer, which will be coming from the bathrooms in the facility, and the other one is to carry floor drains, which will be in the, that must be carried separately, floor drains that are in the, the indoor garage. It goes through gas oil-water separator before emptying into the, into the city sewer system. We also show a, a gas connection and a domestic water connection and a fire, fire flow connection, all on that side as well. And to the northwest on Prospect Street, we show where we're connecting our stormwater into the, into Prospect Street. The stormwater goes into, into that same system now, but we'll be putting a, a new connection in to connect to the, the improved system that we've installed. Next sheet, please. And this sheet is, this is the landscape sheet, I am going to turn this over to Nick Betts, who can, is, is a landscape architect and is better at describing these things than I am.
Can everyone hear me?
Nick, can you just hang on one second?
Sure.
Bonnie?
Yes?
Um, I have a, I have a procedural problem, a question, and it may or may not be true. We have received some texts from some people who are attempting to attend the meeting, and they have been locked out saying that there is a 100-person maximum on the city system.
Andy, can you respond to that, please?
Yeah, thank you. I actually have been monitoring or watching the attendees list as the, the meeting was starting up. That may in fact be the case, we had actually seen it go over 100 and then drop for some reason. So I don't know how many folks, you know, may have gotten that message. I will be checking into Zoom to see if there's anything that can be done to raise that cap. We don't usually have attendees of that disorder of magnitude, but I would, that's one reason I would certainly suggest that this hearing be continued for further public comment, just because we don't know how many others may want to comment, but as a, as a present, we have 100 folks as general public attendees right now.
Madam Chair, could we take about a one-minute break so I can discuss this with my clients?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Andy, to follow up on that, you're saying in future you will check on it, there's nothing you can do about it tonight?
No, I don't believe that there's anything I can do at this moment to change that.
Okay. I'm showing 111 or 100, it's slipping, it was 112, now 110 participants?
Yeah, I will, I will actually check our settings right now and see if that...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So it's my understanding that you can upgrade immediately to a larger amount. My concern is, however, that there may be people who have been turned away and aren't coming back, and that's, that's a concern for us.
Okay, so...
We would request to continue, it's until your next meeting.
Okay, at which time, we'll at least be able to upgrade to make sure everybody who wants to either participate or at least attend will be able to attend.
Correct.
Andy?
Yes, I'll be making whatever changes can be done to increase that threshold. I'll leave it to you as to what date you want to continue to.
Well, we have a little bit of a complication on our next meeting date, which is June, where are we, June 17th, because we have a joint public hearing with the City Council planned, and we have several continued public hearings that have already been continued at least twice before for some of them. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to put, to put you on for July 1st. Attorney Mead, how does that work for you?
One moment, please. We'll take July 1st, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. All right. Could I have a motion? Everybody come off of mute, please, Board members.
I'll make the motion to continue to July 1st.
Okay, thank you, Don, and second please.
MJ, I'll second that.
Okay, let me take a roll call. Beth Delio.
Yes.
Anne Gardner. Anne?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Tanya Hartford.
Yes.
Liam McGovern.
Yes.
Rick Tinter.
Yes.
MJ Verdi.
Yes.
Don Walters.
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. So we'll see you on July 1st with a correction to this technological glitch. I apologize to everybody that this has happened, we've all geared up for tonight. So we'll just start again on July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we're going to move right along to the Daily Group, which is also represented by Attorney Mead, unless, yeah, let, let's just do that for now, let's go on through the agenda, and if there are any procedural issues that we have to discuss, we can do that at the end. This is a, actually a review of, of items, and Attorney Mead may need a couple of minutes to get her head around a new application, or a different one to the one she thought she was presenting, so I'm going to leave it to her when she wants to start, to go through the items that have been included, corrected, changed, added, from our discussion last time, and then we will go through each of the decisions.
Sure. Actually, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is see if my fellow members of this team are here, because as you can imagine, they were thinking that it might not start until later, but I believe that they are. So if I could just see if Matt Hammer is on?
Yep, he's here for the meeting and he can speak.
That's great. Matt, do you want to take off, or do you want me to start?
It's up to you. I know I was prepared to walk through the, the remaining items, and I can do that if that's what you'd like me to do.
No, I, I've got it right in front of me, Matt, then maybe you can hop on board when I have messed up. So as the Chair suggested, there were a few items that needed to be resolved from the last meeting, a couple of details needed to be added to the plans, which Matt has done, provided the Board with those details, the Board with a letter of those details. So the thrust block detail was added, the parking spaces for the public parking at the playground are again five, the crosswalk and the landing has been revised to address Mr. Tinter's comments, the crosswalks are noted with the international standard, sidewalks are more clearly defined to meet the city standard, that, those were notes that were on the plans. The solar-powered yield sign details are on the plans, the landscape plan of site The solar powered yield sign details are on the plans. The landscape plan and site plans are coordinated. The notes regarding the split rail fence around lot one are clear to indicate the fence is at the property line. And then the height of the fence around the playground has been updated to be consistent at four feet. And then we provided a list of the specific Colby Farm road improvements that needed to occur. The reclamation of the asphalt excavation and installation of the material for the road widening, adjusting the castings and gate boxes, fine grade and compact, installing asphalt paving four inches in total, removing and replacing existing driveway aprons, excess reclaimed material to be spread on the reserve site, and then the police details. And then that would be finally approved by DPS and the city engineer, but brought back to the planning board. In addition, and importantly, the applicant has met with the mayor, figuratively speaking, of course, and DPS director and has agreed upon all of the various improvements that are going to be made to the Colby Colby Farm area, including the road, the sewer improvements, the recreational building related next door and the playground and a couple of other items. And that's been done and signed by the mayor and Mr. Daly. The applicant is requesting waivers for the lot area in frontage of lot one, which the board voted on at the last meeting. And the proposed turnaround for the fire truck, which the board voted on at the last meeting. And by this letter, we're also, or by tonight in the letter I submitted, requesting withdrawal of the subdivision. I think that's it. Is that it, Matt?
Yeah, you've included all the items that were our understanding as outstanding that needed to be updated in the plans. Additionally, the the sub consultant review engineer, Mr. Phil Christiansen, had reviewed those plans as well. And had provided an approval on those items as well from that email correspondence from May 29th.
I think that's it, Madam Chair.
Whoops, thank you. Good. Okay, planning board members, any comments or additions you'd like to see? Rick, did you want to add something?
Sure, yes, thank you. I did have a question about the planting plan. There were some lines on that that I couldn't figure out what they what they meant. They didn't seem to correspond to the other sheets in the plan, and I wonder whether we could get an explanation for that. These are particularly in the area of the playground and common open space. There are three heavy solid lines that don't actually cover, there you go, that's what I what I put together today. Those three lines that I called out don't relate to the grading plan. So I was wondering if there's an explanation for what they are, or maybe this is an earlier grading proposal that was changed and it just hasn't been updated to match the current grading plan. Could have an explanation of that, please?
I could answer that. Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering, the grading is going to be per hour grading on our grading sheet. And those grading lines should be omitted from the landscape or the planting plan.
Okay, thank you. Then then when we get to a motion, I'll want to add that as a as a condition. Not that this will hold it up, but just to make sure that the planning plan either removes those lines or mimics the ones on the grading plan. I did have another question on the sheet. I'm not sure what the title of the sheet is, but it's the summary sheet with eight numbers on it. The top has costs and city request requirement and the bottom has details written out. And my question is about number six. I may have just missed this when this was discussed before. But in the top table, number six.
Rick?
Yeah.
Rick, I'm sorry, this is Andy just interjecting. Could you clarify what plan sheet you're looking at? Just I wanted to help out the board members to see what you're referring to.
Plan sheet, it's a separate document. And let me see if I can figure out what the name of that document is. There are so many documents.
Mr. Tinter, could I maybe help you? Is that the impact fees and public benefit resolution?
It is. Let me just see. It doesn't have a title like that on it. At the bottom, it says agreed and accepted city new report.
Yeah, that's exactly what that is.
So number six refers to a recreational building 20 by 40 at the top. And then down below, it's a 20 by 40 open air recreational facility. What are we talking about here?
This is something that was part of the Colby Farm one agreement with the mayor. And it's some kind of recreational storage facility with the city, for the city. They're putting it somewhere, not on these properties, but in, they're probably close to the Colby Farm area. Andy might be able to answer that. Nonetheless, the app, the the current agreement with the city, you are holding up an old document. The current agreement is that the applicant is contributing $60,000 towards that.
Oh, so do we have that some? I mean, I guess that was, that leads to another question is where do the, where do all of these agreements get captured in the in the decisions, if I have the conditions of a decision?
Yeah, Rick, if I could speak to this for a second. So, Rick, this this document is actually not intended for the planning board. This document is actually a discussion that the development team is having with the mayor about, you know, mitigation and public benefits related to this particular project. The, there's a reference, the reason why you ended up getting a copy of this is because there was a reference in earlier discussion about a public playground or not within this development. As you know, the plans, as they're being approved, include a playground. But the question is whether or not the mayor and city council want to accept a public easement over that playground space as was discussed at a prior meeting. So there are other things on this list that relate to other city departments and operations that aren't really the jurisdiction of the planning board. So I don't think that's the that I wouldn't relate all the items on this list or this this document to the planning board. The only other reason, the to your question about the recreational building, which is shown on the list as six, the recreational building is 20 by 40, there's, there was discussion, like Lisa said, on the Colby Farm one across the street, as we're referring to it, about a recreational facility, a storage barn essentially for the Parks Department that had been negotiated earlier as part of mitigation for that project. So there was ongoing discussions about the details of that as we work with the development team. So I'll leave it to Lisa, any other details on this, but just to be clear, it's not, everything that's referenced in this document is the jurisdiction of the planning board. It's really just the plan that you have approved or will approve with the playground. That question will be left to the city council and to the mayor, as will these other items for the applicable, you know, the mayor, the water sewer commission, council and so forth.
Thank you. So so just to be clear, on this list that we have number four, which is the Colby Farm Lane improvements, that is referenced in the draft OSRD letter of decision, correct? That's the only, this way to the to our to our decisions?
Well, the decision draft requires is their compliance with public services specifications for those improvements. And that's where this this document comes in. So I think we've sufficiently covered that from the planning board's language, if that's what your question is.
I guess I guess my question is how much of this page that was on the on the, that was given to us as part of this the information for this project, how much of this actually is pertinent to our decision? And how much is is can can be done or not regardless of our decision?
So I would say based on the draft language you have, that you don't need to make reference to this document. Yeah, Lisa may have more to offer on that.
So the document, the purpose of the document was to set forth for various departments in the city the costs related to some of these improvements, which have been discussed, but never finalized since Colby Farm one. So those things that are pertinent to the Colby Farm two decision are actually included in the decision. The playground, the improvements in the road, the solar sign, the solar yield signs, those are already included in the decision. This was quantifying it for the city.
I understand that, but I guess the decision, the reason I I this was called out to me is the decision has number seven says the provided list of street improvements. So I assumed that that was referring back to the list of street improvements here. Is there a different? Is there a different list of street improvements?
Yes, it's in the cover letter that I just went through on May 27th that I submitted to the board.
So, okay, so maybe maybe the language of this should be a little bit straightened out. So say the list, the the street improvements listed in the applicant's letter dated such and such. Just just so, because I thought it was referring to this document.
That's fine. We can make that change in the draft decisions when we get to it. The applicant doesn't have a problem with that.
I just, I just wanted a clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Are there any other comments from planning board members?
This is Don. I have one. The the question regards the condominium association documents. And with respect to what type of verbiage going forward, how do we approve it, if at all? Or is it up to some other third parties between the applicant and someone in the city to agree on those 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 kind of docs?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Walters, so the the specific language that we need to include in the condominium documents is repeated in the decision. And so two things, two types of reviews will happen. One, the conservation commission is requiring us to show them the condominium documents. And two, the zoning code enforcement officer reviews the condominium documents also to make sure they're consistent with the decision. Otherwise, we don't get our building permits or occupancy permits or whatever it is that we would need. So those are the two reviews that occur. That's what's happened on, that's what happened on Colby Farm one. And that's what happened on Evergreen as well.
Thank you.
Would any other board member like to speak at this point? As I don't believe I closed the public comment for the entire application, so let me just open that and see if there's anybody who would like to speak from the public. Is anyone raising their hand, Andy?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, then I'll close it permanently. And we will go to the draft decisions. There's an awful lot of overlap between the OSRD decision and the 6C special permit. I'm going to start with the OSRD and highlight those those elements that are specific to the OSRD. If I leave anything out that someone thinks is important, please let me know, but I'm just going to read through this. It's basically confirming not only the list that Attorney Mead went through, but our discussions about this application in the past. So it lists that there will be two waivers, lot area in frontage for lot one is shown on the plan. And the proposed turnaround for the fire truck behind the set of five individual homes at the rear of the property from the current number of turn requirements. And those waivers, if you remember, we've already voted on. The general special permit criteria, number one has to do with the use is that's requested is listed in the table. And that is described specifically for this application. With the wording, the property is located in the CFL ROD, which is subject to the dimensional requirements applicable to the R2 zoning district. Single family residential use is allowed in the table of use regulations by right in the R2 zoning district. The two family use is authorized under sixteen, section 14 H4 of the OSRD provisions of the ordinance. I don't feel like I need to read through all of these as everybody has reviewed them. Are there any that any member would like to call out to emphasize? Andy, is a procedural issue? Am I required to read all of these general permit criteria?
You're not required to read all of them into this record here. I think that you could reference the draft provided by the office, which highlights the, what we've done here is essentially in this draft decision for your benefit is to enumerate the ordinance requirements for the the board's criteria review and findings that the board should make. So I think if the board makes reference to the draft provided by the office, that makes those findings, I think that's sufficient rather than having to read word for word.
Okay, so I hereby make reference to the draft decision for the OSRD. Calling out the general special permit criteria and the OSRD special criteria. I was going to read them, but I guess I don't have to. And I know that everybody has had a chance to review this before the meeting. It includes the standard conditions, which are templated for every special permit. And then I think I would like to go through the special conditions as they were referenced earlier and two members' questions and comments. So if you'll hang in there with me, I'm going to read these. I'm only going to read them once. They show up again in the special permit for 6C. So I'm just going to read them here to make sure that it says what we want it to say. Special conditions. In addition to the foregoing standard conditions, the planning board hereby grants approval subject to the special conditions stated below. One, the following language shall be included within the associated recorded condominium association documents and the deed to lot one. Document documentation of such recording to be provided to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of any occupancy permits within the proposed OSRD and shall not be removed without express written permission from the City of Newbury Board. In quotes, the subject properties are located along or adjacent to Colby Farm Lane, a roadway which has included municipal facilities established prior to planning board approval of the associated residential development of this property. All owners and successors and interest hereby acknowledge the presence of these lawfully preexisting uses, which will be maintained and operated as long as they are needed by the city, including but not limited to a recycling facility, a compost property, a storage facility for the Parks Department and Department of Public Services, open space and trail networks open to the general public. There any comments on that? I just realized it says trail networks. If that's having to do with Colby Farm two, I don't know if that is actually accurate. Does anyone have?
I think that that refers to the little river trails at the end of the road.
Okay. All right. Because I know we did talk about not encouraging and preferably not having anyone walk in the open space on what we were calling lot three.
But Madam Chair, there's also, there's also trails on Colby Farm one, so it's inappropriate reference. I agree with Mr. Tinter.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was thinking about that, but I got stuck on Colby Farm two. Okay, and please interrupt me. I'm going to just read through these. But if a board member or the applicant would like to comment, please stop me. Special condition number two, the applicant and or condominium association shall be responsible for hiring a licensed trash removal company to service the homes within the proposed OSRD until such time as the City of Newbury Port agrees to provide trash and recycling pickup services within this private development. Three, prior to issuance of the third occupancy permit within this development, the applicant shall provide proof of recording for the fee, interest, transfer and deed of proposed open space areas within the OSRD to the City of Newbury Port as proposed by the applicant. Four, prior to the issuance of the last two occupancy permits within this development for market rate units, the applicant shall provide proof of recording for a regulatory agreement and deed rider approved by DHCD and the City of Newbury Port so that the proposed new affordable housing unit in this project is qualified for listing on the city's subsidized housing inventory maintained by DHCD. The applicant shall pay for the services of a lottery agent relative to the selection of qualified buyers for the affordable unit and any other requirements related there too.
Excuse me for interrupting. Andy, could you just move the the image so we can read along?
Yep.
Five, there shall be an accessible playground as proposed. Prior to issuance of the last two occupancy permits within this development for market rate units, the applicant shall provide confirmation from the city's parks director that the playground as installed is fully accessible in accordance with applicable standards. As proposed, the applicant shall extend an offer to the Parks Commission, mayor and city council for Mayor and City Council for acceptance of a public easement over the proposed playground if they should desire said playground to accommodate the general public as well as residents of this new development.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's one correction in that that is showing on the screen, but you.
Yeah. It's, I bet it's fully, right?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
I was tripping over that as I read it. That was corrected and I failed to note it in my copy, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I should read from there, okay. There shall be no residential parking in the public spaces as proposed. The condominium association documents and the deed to lot 1 shall reflect this prohibition. Seven, the provided list of street improvements shall be completed prior to the issuance of the last two occupancy permits and prior to opening of the proposed playground space to any users all subject to standards issued by the Newburyport Department of Public Services for work in the public right of way.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Incorporate, uh, Mr. Tainter's comments. I would suggest that after the term improvements in the first line, the following should be added, set forth in the applicant's letter of May 27.
Okay.
And in addition to that, um, oh, I see, okay. So the, the, there was a, there was a, no, nevermind, I got it now, sorry.
Fine, so noted. Eight, Andy, can I have eight, please? Eight and nine. Thank you. The proposed playground and all accessible equipment shall be privately owned and maintained. The applicant shall provide a public access easement to the city for their consideration prior to the last two market rate certificates of occupancy, which the city may in its sole determination decide to accept through its mayor and city council. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
No, and the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you. And nine, the applicant shall submit an A&amp;R plan to the planning board, which I believe is actually on our agenda for some one of our meetings coming up.
That's correct.
Okay. Those are, that, that's the OSRD. What I'm gonna do is just reference the other two, um, and then we'll take all three, um, we'll take a vote on all three decisions at once, if that's alright. So, um, the special permit 6C is hereby referenced as, um, draft document that we have all seen and if there are no additions other than what has already been noted on the OSRD to be consistent, that will carry over as well and we can consider this ready for approval. Hearing no comments, um, just make that reference, okay? Um, the last one is the site plan review, which has findings that, uh, well, it starts with one waiver, just to, where are we? Andy, the site plan review, if you wanna pull that up? Yeah. Uh, the waiver, um, is that the applicant has requested waivers from submitting a traffic report for full environmental and community impact analysis, which I believe we've already taken care of. The findings are the, um, there's nothing that is, is not in accordance with all the findings, just to point out, the last one is more specific than the others. That has to do with open space environmental protection, the property is 7.631 acres, of which 80% will be preserved open space, the stormwater plan ensures protection of the wetlands. So I just wanted to highlight that. Other than that, there's standard conditions and no special conditions on the site plan review.
Bonnie, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, please. Uh, Don.
Okay, um, I actually thought there were two waivers, I thought the other waiver was the truck turnaround, the fire truck turnaround.
That was captured on the OSRD and the, um, and the special permit.
Understand, but I guess I'm trying to understand if this is, if this was just a normal site plan review, I would have thought that that would have been on it as well. But, um,
It wasn't included.
Whatever you decide is fine. The second item then is with respect to the.
Wait, 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 stop on that one, uh, Don, excuse me. Andy, did you wanna speak to Don's comment, first one?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, just to clarify, this section is actually just waivers from the submission requirements that the board had already, uh, just.
Oh, correct, yes, yes, that's a distinction, okay. Go ahead, Don, your second one.
I, I believe the last copy that I received, I, I think we should change the site plan review for a majority, a simple majority, not to two-thirds in the decision.
Yes, that's correct, Don, Don's correct on that. That would be under procedural history in the very first page. The, yeah, it says two-thirds super majority, should just say, uh, majority, necessary majority.
But we can still vote on all three together, right?
Yes.
Good.
I had another, uh, comment, just, I think this is the appropriate place to put a, um, condition in that the, uh, planning plan be revised to, to, uh, conform to the other plans in the plan set.
Put it in site plan review?
I think so, I, I don't, I'm not sure, yeah, I would be happy, Andy, where that should go, but I think it should be part of our approval somewhere.
Yeah, I would just, uh, suggest we'll add one special condition. If the motion to approve includes another special condition, that the applicant shall, prior to any construction or the issuance of building permits, submit a revised landscape plan, uh, that, uh, matches the grading sheet. Um, and that shall be the record plan for construction.
That's fine.
Good, then it's incorporated in here and we don't have to put it in the motion. Is that why, why you wanted to put it here and it's, 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 um, memorialized in the decision?
Yeah, I was offering that language, my assumption was that if someone was motioning to approve, they could, uh, so motion to approve with that special condition added to the draft provided by the office.
Okay. Alright, so we're ready, I think, are we ready for the motion then? It's gonna do, let's do site plan review separately, just for that reason, and we can put, um, the special permit and the 6C decision in one motion and I'll take a motion for that now. Who would like to motion, make a motion to approve 6C and OSRD special permit for Colby Lane 2?
So, Bonnie, it's Leah, sorry, Rick, I beat you.
Second.
Okay, Leah made the, made the motion, Rick seconded it. Any further comments? We'll do a roll call. Beth Delio? Anne Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
I abstain, I, I don't, I can't vote on this.
That's right, you can't vote on this one, correct. Uh, Leah McGovern? Leah, you gonna vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that's approval of the two special permits. And Rick, would you like to make the motion for the site plan review? Decision?
Sure, well, I, I think Andy has given us that language and I'd sort of move to approve the site plan, uh, with the special condition as stated by the planning director to ensure that, I'll, I'll use his language, but it's basically to require that the, uh, planning plan be brought into conformance for the rest of the plan set.
And do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. And I'll call roll, uh, Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I say yes. And then we have one more motion to withdraw the associated subdivision application without prejudice.
So moved, Anne.
Thank you, Anne, second.
Second that, MJ.
Thank you. Roll call, Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
I think I can vote on that, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. Colby 2 is approved.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board, we'll see you for the A&amp;R and everything else, thank you.
Yes, alright, thank you. Alright, now we just have to vote to continue everything, um, on the rest of the agenda. Where is it, there it is. Okay, um, Andy? Could I do this as? Can we just do it as one, all three of them at once?
Um, yeah, there's no problem with doing one motion for all those, uh, you do have the 20 graph road, uh, decision as well, but, um, but you certainly can.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead and 20 graph road, uh, applicant is waiting to come on, I'm so sorry, I was just a little too eager to move on.
But you're correct.
I apologize. We'll come back to that.
You can move, yeah, you can move to, um, reschedule all those in one collective motion.
Yeah, I will afterward, we're, we're gonna do, uh, 20, 10 graph road. What I'd like to do is just go through the, um, pieces that have been revised and make sure I've got it right with the applicant, so I'll ask the applicant afterward to confirm or add to what I say. And then we can move right along to, um, the draft decisions. I'll just read from the staff report, the applicant has submitted revised plans based on the feedback given during the most recent planning board and conservation meetings, the changes are summarized below. The plan revisions requested by the conservation commission consist of the following. Revisions to the proposed grading in the vicinity of the drainage ditch, um, to provide additional flood storage capacity. Revisions result in a net increase of 384 square feet of flood storage. Also attached is a landscape maintenance plan dated May 24th, with notations regarding maintenance of the various grassed areas. I'll ask, who am I talking to, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm talking to Brad, right?
Hi, Madam Chair. Yes, Brad McKenzie.
Yeah, so have we got the ConCom, um, uh, items correct?
You do, Madam Chair. At the request of the commission at the last meeting, they asked that the, the, the principal reason why it was continued uh, on June 2nd was to provide some additional flood storage capacity to compensate for the extension of the culvert and the 3:1 slope that was filled at the request of the city engineer. Um, so if you look at sheet C2, which is our grading and drainage.
Brad, can I stop you for a moment? If this was already approved by the ConCom, we'll accept it and we really don't have to have the detail if you don't mind. Has it been accepted by them?
Yeah. We believe it would have last night, however, um, they had to continue the meeting because there was no quorum, but.
Oh, that, oh.
So, uh, I believe that Julia sent a memo to planning staff indicating that the conservation commission really had no issues with the plan. And, um.
Uh, this is Andy, I would jump in there as well, I was at the conservation commission meeting and I, the expectation was that that would be approved last night. Uh, we just happened to have some last minute members that couldn't attend.
So where does that leave us with, accepting that all of this is, um, part of a decision that we're about to make? Does that cause us any procedural issues?
No, I think what I would say is, uh, typically, and you're correct to point this out, Chair, well, usually we try to avoid, um, the planning board or conservation commission closing the hearings and approving a set of plans that may not match the other board's plans. Um, the applicant, the applicant is still the one that's obligated to comply with both of the permits and reconcile those discrepancies to satisfy both boards, but we obviously prefer to close the hearings and reference plans that are the same for both boards. I don't think that's likely to be an issue at this point. And I think it'd be reasonable to, for the board to proceed if it wanted to vote on the decisions and issue them tonight. Because I think based on having participated in the conservation commission meeting that, uh, there won't, won't be any adjustments in the plans, uh, and the conservation commission will approve at their next meeting with the quorum. Um, so I think there's a low risk of there being any discrepancies in the plans based on my involvement in the, the hearing process there. Uh, but the board always has the right to, uh, continue the hearing if it needs to, to wait till, till that loop is closed if it wishes, but I, I just don't see that as an issue right now.
And I don't think we have any issues with any of this, so I'd like to move on to the revisions that the planning board discussed specifically with the applicant, um, last time, if that would be okay. Um, there are three of them. Uh, one is revisions to relevant sheets to reflect the elimination of two parking spaces at the extreme northwest and southwest corners of the parking lot. This change also resulted in the elimination of the modular block wall at the northwest corner of the block and the reduction in length of the wall at the southwest corner of the block. We probably oughta have a look at that because several of us were concerned about, um, the parking and, um, not remembering exactly why you went ahead and did this, Brad.
Sure, I think at least one of, one of the members, I don't recall which one of you had asked us to explore the, the feasibility of adding additional green space within the parking lot. Even though we did comply with the, uh, interior green space requirement per your bylaw or your ordinance. So, what we looked at is eliminating two spaces, one in the northwest corner and one in the southwest corner. If you could look at sheet C1 or C2, it might, might be clearer and the, uh, we thought it made sense to eliminate a, a few of the spaces where the limit of the proposed parking lot encroached further within the buffer zone to the wetland. And, um, so if you look at the, and if you move over to the, again, the, the left of the plan, at the, at the, right there, we eliminated a space right there. And if you go south on the plan, to the next corner, we eliminated another one right there. So the two spaces that we eliminated were the two closest spaces that, to the, the BVW resource. And obviously it adds green space, so we thought that it, um, those locations made a lot of sense. Also, reducing the need, or eliminating the need for a modular block wall at that northwest corner and reducing the length of the wall at the southwest corner.
Okay, thank you. The second revision was a bike rack with cement concrete pad has been added to the relevant sheets to accommodate 10 bikes. Is that enough, Rick?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay. A detail, oh, and Leah, of course, my, the two bikers that I know of, I'm sure there are many more on the board. A detail, the proposed monument sign and bike rack has been added to sheet D5. Can you pull that up?
That was sheet D5, you said?
D5, yeah. So, right there, um, top left monument sign.
And, um, I think we talked about this, it meets all the, the standards for, um, this type of sign in the industrial, a business park, right?
Correct, we use, we use the model that Andy suggested at our last meeting as, as a guide.
Okay. So there won't be any surprises.
Bottom right, I think is the bike rack detail. Bottom right of the sheet.
Okay, we got it, just wanted to make sure it was there, okay, great. Okay, so, um, any other questions or comments from board members? I don't believe there was any public comment, but just let me open it for the record and see if anybody raises their hand. I don't believe there was any public comment, but just let me open it for the record and see if anybody raises their hand. And not hearing any, so I will close that. And reference the draft decisions for major site plan review and special permit for use as I did in the previous application. Let me just. There's a, there's a, there are waivers, again waivers from the submission of the application on the site plan review. So we'll look at that first. The applicant is requesting a waiver for the preparation of a full traffic and access impact study. As the traffic volume anticipated as a result of the development will have negligible impacts on existing operations on Henry Graff Jr. Road and the surrounding roadway network. A trip generation summary is included in the environmental impact report. The applicant is requesting a waiver for, for the preparation of a planting plan by a registered landscape architect. The submittal includes a planting restoration plan prepared by MEG in collaboration with Hughes Environmental Consulting. Other than that, the findings are pretty straightforward and referenced through, from our draft decision that everybody has seen. There are standard conditions, but no special conditions on the major site plan review decision document. Anything else to be added or commented on?
I think the same thing with this one will just change the two thirds, super majority to a majority.
Correct.
And Andy, that'll be changed in the template?
Correct.
I would also, if I might add, I would also check, I think there's a miscalculation of parked, the number of parking spaces. I think there was a reference of 97.
Yes, right there.
Right, we got 91.
Caitlin, could you take note of that?
Noted.
And the 10 van accessible spaces still hold?
They do.
Okay, so the way that, I was having trouble with this. Does that mean that the accessible spaces are part of the 91?
Yes.
Okay.
You could clarify that if you wanted to say with as opposed to and.
Yeah. Yeah, because and looks like additional.
I would say including rather than with.
Yes, I would too, including. Thank you. And let's do that in the future because I've let it go on other ones, but if we're going to be really particular, we should make it clear. Anything else? Substantive or editorial? Okay. The special permit is for use. There are findings that are not earth shattering. I'm sorry to be a little flippant about it, but I don't believe I need to read these specifically. Other than the first one that says the proposed use is listed as use number 215, medical office building and requires a special permit. And everything else is pretty straightforward. There are standard conditions and no special conditions. Do we need any? I don't think so.
The office doesn't have any in particular.
Okay, good. Then we can take both of these in a motion to approve. Could I have that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the 20 Henry Graff Jr. Road applications for major site plan review and special permit in accordance with the draft decisions provided by the planning office.
And amend as amended in the meeting?
Yes.
Second?
Who's the second?
Ann.
Ann, okay. All right. And for approval, I'll call a roll. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. So you are approved from the planning board. You still need to get your Conservation Commission approval and you're good to go, Brad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you, board. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good night. All right, so now we're ready to continue these three public hearings listed on the agenda. We'll take a motion to continue all three of them to June 17th. Yeah, to June's, to, it's correct, June 17th, Andy?
Correct.
Okay. Ann moves, makes the motion. Who's second?
Second.
Ann, Beth?
Yep.
Yep. And I'll call the roll on approval. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. Okay. Thank you. Now. Approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion?
Move approval of the minutes of May 20th as amended?
Second?
I'll second. Tanya?
Okay, and as part of the discussion, just to know that we've gotten into a little routine. If anyone else wants to get on board, you're welcome to, but we've been at least doing a round robin between Don, Rick and myself, sending our edits to Linda. And so we have three eyes on it for sure, in addition to anything that anybody else picks up when you're reading it. But we're not going to spend time during the meeting to go over them unless there's something in this set that Rick or Don wants to highlight for everybody.
That's great. Thanks, Bonnie.
Okay.
Rick and Don.
Okay, thank you. So approval of the minutes, roll call. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I say yes. So I'm going to jump to the vote to authorize that Andy had proposed. It's pretty straightforward, but Andy, you want to just give us a couple of words on these before we take the vote?
Yes, thank you. Actually, obviously we have some very unusual circumstances we're dealing with. As you can see earlier tonight, we're still adapting. And we've made a couple of modifications actually to our Zoom account as time has gone on, actually to accommodate more storage space for our recorded meetings, which take up some space. Now, I actually during the meeting here made an adjustment to our capacity, but one thing we're doing here and this document is intended to assist us during the time of COVID, if you will, is to allow both Bonnie and I, the chair and the planning director to sign mile our plans on behalf of the board. There's obviously other decisions, written documents. Those are relatively straightforward, but the miles are the ones that are more difficult because there has to be a wet signature on it for the registry deeds. We're still a bit antiquated in government, so, so things are all done electronically. So, so with that, this document, Lisa, me and I had a discussion about this because there are documents coming in. There's several A and R plans and you've got the subdivision or OSRD and so forth. So there'll be other things coming along depending on how long this lasts. So this document would do two things. It would clarify that electronic signatures are sufficient for the, for the time being. And it also allowed Bonnie and myself to actually be the ones to sign the plans after they've been approved and decisions and so forth, just to make sure that that's clear for the record. This would be sent to the registry of deeds. They would record it and that would just verify to cover all bases. And so it does basically those particular tasks. And then there's a, the formality of signatures. I have the unfortunate thing of noting that I did talk to the assistant registrar today and they did tell me that we do have to have on this particular document one time. We have to have wet signatures from the planning board members. So I was hoping to reach out to each of you and figure out whatever times might work to sort of swing by, you know, work out something to just sort of get your signatures, but what this, although they said they could not avoid that, meaning there has to be some original version of wet signatures. After that, that this document, once signed with a majority of members, would allow us to to do what this document says, which is to avoid having to have you sign anything, you know, in the coming months or weeks at least. So during COVID, Bonnie and I could be the sole people who sign those and you wouldn't have to deal with nine members all trying to get in there to sign mile our plans.
So if you could tell us some times that you're just going to be in the office, couldn't we drop by, call you, have you come out and let us in and sign it? And be done with it in the next two or three days?
Yeah, I actually, I am happy to offer sometimes now. I don't know how many of you are sort of, you know, generically around the area can swing in. Tomorrow, I could, you know, suggest a time or I don't know if there's a chunk of days that work better for folks, but I could adjust a couple of different times if people need more than one to just swing by and endorse this document.
Andy, do they all need to be on the same copy or can we each sign?
No, I believe the registry has accepted another version with it signed on separate pages. So although it, I'm sure they'd prefer it to have it on one and if you folks, if you folks prefer to have it all individual, what I could do is just drop off in your respective mailboxes the form. You could sign it and then I could swing back to pick it up if that works for you. I don't know. That's another thing I can think of that, if that works.
Well, how many people really can't swing by the planning office during the day sometime in the next two or three days?
I'm, I'm happy to swing by.
Yeah.
I have no problem.
Yep.
Yeah, so if I just know, if you give us blocks of time when you know you're going to be there, because I know you're not always in the office all the time. You have to rotate with other people who are being in there. We'll just drop, make sure we drop by during one of those times. And today I had to go by to get a signature notarized. And I learned that you have to call who you're going to see and they will come let you in.
Yeah, yeah, every office is adapted with unusual protocols.
So there, there are phone numbers on the outside so you can call the office, but then hit zero so somebody will actually pick it up because there are a whole bunch of menu items, all of which are automated. So if you know to do that, then you can get hold of Andy and he'll know you're there and come get you at the door.
Could I suggest, you know, 10 or 10:30 tomorrow morning? Would that work for anyone?
That works for me, Ann.
Yeah, it works for me.
I could do it afternoon time. Sorry.
I could do it in the morning, but I can't do it. I could do it at 9, but I couldn't do it at 10.
Okay, could we do, if you could, you could try 9, Leah, and then I could do 10:30 with the, unless the others want to just switch to 9.
Yeah, I could do 9.
Oh, wait a minute.
Unfortunately, I need to do 10:30, Andy.
Okay, so how about 9, 10:30 and then is there, there's someone wants an afternoon slot as well?
Yeah, I could do maybe like 1 or something.
Okay.
I could do that too. For 1:30.
That's Elizabeth, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
A little before 9 would be helpful for me, but I don't want to, I don't want to inconvenience you, Andy, coming in so many times.
No, that's fine. You want to say 8:30 or?
Oh, gosh, 8:30 would be great.
Okay, all right.
Was there another 8:30 among you all?
We just want you to feel guilty, Leah.
Okay, so I got, if it works, I've got three time slots tomorrow, 8:30 AM, 10:30 AM and 1 PM. Is there anybody else that needs a different time? And I could just, like I said, you could just swing to the front door of City Hall if you want. I can have it right there, ready for you to sign.
That sounds great.
Great.
All right. Before we take the vote, I have a question. James is not here, but you need his signature. So if he, if he, if he's voting absent, you still need him to come in and sign it, right?
No, actually he would not be necessary. We would actually just check the box absent for this and that would be, that's fine with the registry.
And so he wouldn't have to sign it?
Right, yep. That's okay.
Okay. Well, that's great because he won't be with us in another month or six weeks anyway, so it's just as well. But I think Caitlin, do we then have to upgrade it, update it to reflect the current members when there's a new member?
Yes. Well, actually, so this, this actually, because it's acted upon by the majority of the board, is actually going to stay in effect until you change it.
Oh, so, okay, so this isn't, this isn't authorizing these individuals. These people are just noted as having voted on it.
Correct, correct.
Got it. Okay, all right. All right, so can we vote on these both at the same time?
You can. I would actually suggest if you wanted to, just for convenience, because the record will show, if you wanted to take a motion to approve the document as modified this evening, I think, and I would actually suggest if it hasn't been clarified, we, there's one text change that Rick and I discussed earlier today. Did we cover that?
No, we didn't.
On that, on that first page there. Rick just suggested to clarify in greater detail in this language here that we're not just suggesting that the planning director and the planning board chair need to sign, but rather that it's and/or, that way we're not, again, the whole point here is to reduce the amount of paperwork and shared documents and things that might, you know, be problems during COVID. So, so this would be an and/or change we'd make in there. So I guess if, if you wanted to make a motion to approve this document as amended this evening, you know, noting the absence of James in the listing, and I'll obviously print these with blank signatures for you to sign. Then, then if you just vote to approve this document with the content within, I think that'll be sufficient for the record.
Andy, do you mind? I usually spell Delisle with a capital L.
Oh, my apologies, yeah.
Not a big deal, but.
No, my apologies. I will correct that.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Whoever, I saw Don and I heard someone else, so I'll take, Don is moved and who was the one for second?
Yeah.
Leah, okay. Roll call. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay. Are there any updates or other issues that anyone would like to discuss at this point? We have 17 participants, so we still have company.
Yeah, this is Andy. Just a quick note, I did actually during our meeting this evening, go back and check our Zoom account. And I did, while the discussion was going on with some other items, update our account. The threshold apparently was at 100. And I've, we've, we're obviously paying more, but we've upgraded our account to go to the next threshold, which is actually 500 participants. I should hope we don't have a meeting that runs with 500 people providing public comment one night, but that is the threshold of the next level. I think that's pretty reasonable. It's unfortunate we had to continue the hearing. We, you know, typically for public meetings, just like a public meeting at City Hall, we try to accommodate what we would, would reasonably anticipate based on what we know of the agenda and the, you know, the community input and so forth. It's one reason why there's sometimes debate about having a public hearing in the council chambers because it's a small room and it can't always accommodate larger groups if they're anticipated. So we're obligated to try to anticipate that sort of thing. But in this scenario, obviously, you know, with the COVID situation and adaptation, we need to upgrade that. So we're, I don't know how many people we'll have next time, but I would expect it to be, it looks like over 100. And I think, I don't know how long you'll want to allow for public comment, how many nights you might need for that sort of thing, but, but we'll have that capacity going forward. There are some other things going on. If any of you want to attend a public meeting tomorrow night, Jordi and I are hosting a Zoom meeting again on the city calendar to update the city's open space plan with consultants working from Beta. So if you're interested in weighing in on that at all, you can always give us your comments, of course, as we're working on the project. We're trying to fast track this because it was, the project got started a little bit later than I had wanted. There were some other projects that Jordi was focused on, so we got that up and running, but we have to try to complete by the state's deadline. They haven't been quite flexible with that yet despite COVID. So we're trying to get in there so we can still be eligible for the next grant round. The plans are required for grants at the state. So if you want to participate in that meeting and just weigh in on any open space recreation type priorities, feel free to do so or just, you know, send your comments to us. And I did talk with Council Agaman about, given the fact that these online meetings might be going on for some time, it's all up in the air, but it might go on for a while. might be going on for some time, it's all up in the air, but it might go on for a while, we thought it wise to perhaps pick up again with some zoning amendments that might be, you know, even just housekeeping, and some portions of the rewrite, the zoning rewrite, so we can get those moving along, especially given that it's highly doubtful that the council and others at this time would have the bandwidth to take on the entire zoning rewrite in an online platform. So, so we thought we'd try to move ahead with those. If, if there's a little bit of consensus from the planning board on that, and I'd like to reconvene the zoning advisory committee, will obviously be Zoom, because it's the only way to do things now. But Bonnie and I had discussed the amendment to, to get that going, to amend the 6C, to alter that provision. So I would recommend that that be included in what we're trying to, you know, expedite and get before the council, at least in the docket. And if you have any other thoughts on those things, let me know. We have a few pieces of the zoning rewrite, like the dimensional table, we thought we could carve out, and perhaps move those ahead, just so that we're making some progress despite the COVID situation.
Could you clarify something? You said you called out the 6C amendment as part of the rewrite, or as a standalone?
Sorry, yeah, I should clarify, thank you. Yeah, I actually meant that as a standalone, so we would expedite that one. Again, based on my understanding of our prior discussions, I desire to remove that provision from the ordinance. Again, I'll leave that discussion to you folks, but I know that that was where I last understood we left off, and so my assumption would be that we'd have a council sponsor, of course, and if the board was interested in either modifying that provision or outright removing it from the ordinance, that would be in the next council docket. We'd have a hearing, of course, online, and decide at some point what to do with it.
Well, since we have a few extra minutes and a little bit of energy, could I just get a sense of the board members about 6C? The last time we discussed it, and it was probably on the Merrimack Street one, and we dragged the applicant into that discussion, as we tend to do when we have problems with that ordinance, my sense was that there was a general feeling that we could live without this ordinance. Am I reading that correctly? Is there a reason to hang on to it and amend it? Where does everybody stand on that? Because if Andy's going to go through with having a council, councillor sponsor, an amendment related to that ordinance, I'd like it to be what we want.
Well, I agree.
Okay.
I was going to suggest that the, I think one thing we talked about was the possibility of having multiple houses have frontage, each one have direct frontage of the street rather than being in the rear lots, and the one we had recently on Merrimack Court, or whatever the name of that street was, is an example of that. So that maybe, I think the concern we had, one of the concerns that we had, was about filling up backland and getting away from, you know, things that might otherwise have been a subdivision, if there were enough room for a road and for land and so forth, maybe not being appropriate, but having, still allowing the possibility for something where there were side-by-side houses on a street, or in the case like that, where there are houses facing streets, allow it in that situation. Something to keep in mind, Andy, maybe not totally get rid of it.
So the, the idea would be to keep it for a very special situation, and we'd have to think up all those special situations, and maybe there's only the one, is what you're suggesting.
So in that case, maybe it's an arrogance. Take that back.
Well, it sounds like you were only talking about removing one criteria, I mean, or just making, applying one criteria, in that it has to have frontage.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it was, we were talking, I think our discussion had to do with, let's make sure that whatever happens maintains the character of the neighborhood, and that, if there's a missing tooth along the street frontage, maybe you could fill it in with a house. But I think we also talked about the fact that there aren't very many situations like that, so, you know, I'm talking myself out of it right now.
Yeah. I think it requires, I mean, it requires more thought, Bonnie. I mean, I think I'd want to sort of see through, see about sort of what would be the other options, if there are any other options. I just, I'm not prepared to sort of really dig into it right now. I'd want to look, look at 6C, but I think overall, I think we did talk about the fact that, you know, it's, it's maybe not serving its purpose, but I'd like to kind of maybe figure out what was its purpose, and are there instances maybe where it worked? And I don't know that we've really dug into that conversation yet, so.
True. Yeah, so we would need, I can do some homework on that, and anybody who has some history with the planning board on 6C could look at that. I just want to, I kind of want to make sure that, or try to ensure that when it's proposed in whatever format, that we don't have another brawl, you know, that it's got, you know, that it's highlighted, you know, things that we want to keep, or rationale for why we don't think we need it anymore. So that's really a good suggestion.
And I guess, Andy, you know, the one thing with, with bringing in zoning amendments, and I think I've been the one, I've been, I know I've been the one who's sort of overall said, oh, I want to see, see something more comprehensive. I think I'm okay, you know, I understand that it's hard to take on a whole comprehensive zoning rewrite, but I think it is also difficult to look at a zoning, each of these zoning sections so separately, or each of these pieces in these amendments, they seem to be sort of haphazard. So if there was some sort of rhyme or reason sort of how you're bringing them in, I think that'd be important. And I also think it's important that the way that they're written is, is, is consistent. So I think that, that, you know, having some city councillors maybe write some of the ordinances, you know, different people writing different ordinances, who, it just, I think it might make for a messier document. So I guess I'd want to understand a little bit more what your approach is, and what you guys are thinking about, before I say, oh, yeah, let's start bringing in a bunch of amendments for us to look at.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I totally agree with the point, all the points you just raised, Tanya. I think they're all things that we try to keep in mind when we're thinking about an ordinance, that we might be recommending that the city council change, or that you might be recommending or wanting to tinker with. I agree with everything you've just stated. We try to keep that in mind. We obviously can't control if councils want to sponsor something on their own, they're entitled to, but we do try to coordinate those. Imagine, we would be putting forward our rationale for bringing forward the various amendments, whether they're, again, pieces of the rewrite, because there just isn't the bandwidth right now to do, especially with remote meetings, you know, whole rewrite. But, but, you know, things like the dimensional table, where there's been some general consensus that we've built up in the rationale for the adjustments in the dimensional table, we thought that would make sense. The use table obviously has been updated a little bit more clear, I think, to folks, so we could perhaps clean up able with that component. I have been particularly interested in amending the zoning for Plum Island. That's primarily because over the years, what I've been seeing is, and this is another amendment that, you know, again, you'll have to weigh in on, but as planning board members, but I think we have a planning strategy that we've talked about in a number of different forums for resiliency and sea level rise and things like that. You know, the concerns about Plum Island and sea level rise, and the sewer system and the water system, other that's so fragile, and yet we have zoning, and so does the town of Newbury, that continues to allow growth out there and development of these lots in a much larger scale than what they were historically. So those things are inconsistent, in my opinion, and I think if we're going to be responsible planners, we really should be changing the zoning to do what was originally intended by the Plum Island overlay, which was to limit growth. What it actually does today, there's a few provisions in there actually that are less restrictive than the rest of the city for modifying via a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And we've, I've recently seen the zoning board of appeals continue to approve larger expansions of homes out there. Again, that seems inconsistent and perhaps irresponsible, when we think about land use, you know, policies in general. So that's one thing that I would recommend we change and get on the fast track, just because I think it's, I don't see any reason to allow that provision to stay in place when, when folks are using it to build an hazard-prone area and with much larger structures.
Maybe it would make sense, Andy, for you and Council Agaman, if you guys are working together on this in the zoning committee, to say, okay, these are the, these are the areas that we want to change, or these are the things that we're looking at changing, or we're bringing in, just as a sort of a, so that we could, and then we can go through. So we shouldn't have like an agenda of saying, these are the different pieces that we want to change. I don't know, just a thought.
Yep, yeah, we're, in addition to setting up all these board, regular board meetings, we're trying to set up additional Zoom meetings during the day, for instance, and other evenings when we have the free time, we don't have another meeting conflict to, to get like the zoning advisory committee back together. That's been a little difficult, because I've had a lot of meetings I've hosted recently, but we're going to get the zoning advisory committee together to have this discussion, and if the, if it's the chair and the other board members think it makes sense, perhaps we could carry potential zoning amendments on the next agenda and, and discuss that. And you could also discuss, it sounded like there was maybe some still continued debate about the 6C provision, so we could, as part of that discussion, visit upon any particular amendments you thought were reasonable to bring forward in this, this time. Again, I think it's a question of bandwidth for everybody, trying to get, it might be easier for us to parse out some individual components, even if it's a, some of those are standalone, but some of those are part of a larger package. But even if we can get some of that accomplished, it might be better than, you know, waiting for, you know, months on end, to try to get everybody back into a physical meeting and review a document that's 150 pages long.
Well, and maybe it's also picking out maybe some non, the non-controversial pieces, too, so that they're a little easier to move forward.
Agreed, yeah, some of the cleanups are housekeeping in nature. I realize the Palmone one is sort of a policy.
May not be, right.
Might not be, but, yeah.
I was just looking ahead to see what agenda we would put that on. When did we, I've really got a short memory here. When did we continue the institution for savings to?
July 1.
July 1, oh, okay, well, that's not an option. Speaking of which, can, can Andy, can you please keep that, that date open? Because we've got Parker Street, which is a minor site plan review, and then the institution. If any of these others have to be continued that we hear before that on June 17th?
Agreed, yeah.
They should be continued out a month, and don't take in any new applications for that night.
Understood, yeah. Caitlin and I will keep an eye on that, and, and we'll work with Diane, we'll get everything on the following agendas, and not impacting that night any further.
Okay, and speaking of that one, just to wrap up the institution, just because we have over 100 people signing in on the webinar, does not mean that they are all going to speak. I have, I have no illusions that 100 and whatever number of people wanted to speak tonight. I think they just want to be, hear it and hear what everybody else has to say, and not have to listen to the recording, or if we were face-to-face, you know, watch, they would be able to watch it on TV in real time. I don't know if others feel that way? Do you think we're looking at 100 commenters next, when we open that again?
I think it'll be a fair number of comments. You know, I meant to bring this up while we were discussing that project. Is there any way for us to do a site visit?
There is, yeah.
Excuse me?
There is, I mean, you can, there are, as long as you're following essentially the social distancing protocols, you know, the six-feet masks, if you're any closer, and they, you know, if you can keep them on, that's better. You know, you'll have to work at the property, or we just want to make sure that they have no problem with folks walking on the property. I'm sure that won't be a problem if it was the bank project. And you can either schedule those collectively and go out there, whatever works for you collectively, or you can go individually, if need be, to work on your schedules.
Yeah, I, I find the most productive site visits when we go as a group, and we have, like, the applicant walking us through the design plan, so we can get a better sense of it. And I don't know if anybody else had interest in it?
If there is any interest in that, and there's perhaps times it could be suggested for next week, we could ask, and I'm sure that they, my guess is the bank would happily accommodate, you know, a walkthrough or something of that nature, if there's a time that works.
Yeah, I'd like to do it, just to show interest.
Yeah, I would do it. You do have to open that up to the public, though.
What if we did, Merrimack Street?
Actually not public meetings.
They're not public meetings, but don't you have to, don't you have to have, isn't it a public, it's not a public meeting? I thought it was.
No, their, site visits are not considered public meetings, you don't, there's not an expectation you allow the public on the, the sites that are involved, or that they're invited to those. The constraint, of course, is that the board shouldn't be deliberating or discussing the matter, it really should be just looking at the property and hearing what the applicant might want to offer, but for, you know, information that's specific to the, what you're viewing, but you really shouldn't be deliberating as board members, and that's what means, that's the, where it falls through the, the exceptions of a public meeting.
So, but you raise a good point, we will get some flak, I'm sure, but...
Who will we get flak from?
From members of the public who would like to have the same opportunity, because they haven't been able to interact with the bank in a productive way.
But they shouldn't give us flak, I mean, that's something we routinely do.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I mean, the other, another option, Andy, is we could, have they, have they staked or spray painted the parking lot where the building's going to be?
No, but if you want, I can ask them if they can put markers at the corners and whatnot.
I mean, then they might be able to spray paint the parking lot, too, sort of the outline of the building, and that might be helpful for the members of the public, too, to say that it's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly ask them that, yeah.
We did that recently for a project, and I think that that helped, you know, helped, it was, it was a controversial project, too.
Well, along those same lines, Tanya, and I know you and I might have encountered a lot of the same stuff in our profession, but is there any interest in the board, since we're talking about markings of perhaps, you know, just spray paint? Is there any interest in the sort of balloon, you know, thing?
Yeah.
I think the balloon tests are silly. They don't work. They are, they don't work. Yeah, they don't, I mean, it's, the renderings are so much better, and that's just my opinion. I mean, maybe somebody else has had a good one, but they just made us do a balloon test in, in River River, and it was, it was silly, it didn't work. And it was essentially, it was, it just, yeah.
I think there are plenty of references out there in terms of height, meaning all the other houses are...
Yeah, across the street, on Prospect Street, there are three almost identically high houses, and they've chosen the one in the middle to use as a reference, and the guy who lives there was pointing it out to me and said, you know, it's just almost, it's halfway to the ridge line. So, yeah, so you can see that.
I would like someone from the applicant's team that could present the design, though. I guess that would be the architect.
Well, I, and I would just add, I mean, again, the reason for the site visit is to let you get familiar with the site as it is today, but they're, they are going to be presenting the plans and going through those in detail, and I, I just want to, I think it's good that we be clear about what, what material is going to be covered with the general public during the public meeting. The site visit is really just to kind of familiarize with, with, you know, the site as it is today, before you have that discussion with the applicant during your meetings.
Well, I think for me, it really has to, I really have to get a good feeling, not only what's there today, which I do have a good feeling of, but what is it going to be? Like, when we went through the design plans on that Merrimack Street proposal, it just became crystal clear, and I would not have gotten that with site plans and renderings. It's just very, very different.
You know what might help, Anne, to build on that idea, is have them, have us stand with an architect to see, looking at the rendering from that point, what it is we're going to see, and then walk us to another point and show us those, those, what are they called, renderings, or the, the things that look like photographs?
The renderings, yeah.
The rendering, so you see that, now we're standing at the, this corner, along the side, at the front, and now, look at this picture, that's what you would see from here. If they could just do that, it would be enough for us to imagine what it's going to look like. And that would be very clear instruction to whomever is going to guide us through this sidewalk.
And then we could, I, I think we could make a judgment about the impacts on the surrounding historic homes and neighborhood, which is, you know, one of my concerns.
Yeah, yeah, would just help us to, to physically imagine it by looking at the, at the rendering from that perspective. Okay, I'm up for that. Andy, do you want to get some proposed times from them, and see if we, I mean, not one, but some choices, and see how many of us we can get in on one of those dates?
Yeah, if we could just confirm dates that, that work for you, or I can just ask Lees or her client to propose a couple of times.
No, start it the other way around, yeah, because they're going to be, I think so, because we're all over, we're, some of us are very available, and some of us aren't.
Well, I'd rather see when we were available. I think it's incumbent on them to accommodate us. I mean, if there's any member that would like to participate, you know, again, I, I think as, as a group, it's very valuable.
Okay, could we do one of those Google calendar, whatever you do, it's sign-up doodle things, and just see when people could do it next week? Would that work?
Could we try to propose something now? Is anybody working? Is anybody working? I know Leah is because she's going to be at City Hall at 8:30, but.
Well, I'm working. You mean, I'm, I'm working from home most days, but is that what you may get?
Yeah, and I don't know if, if people had a, you know, sometimes we do it at 7:30 in the morning. I mean.
I don't know that I'd like that.
All right, so those of you with restricted calendars, give us a time of day and a day of the week that would work for you.
I'm pretty open.
Yeah, I think I could probably make something work. I think that, you know, Fridays are usually pretty good. But other days, I can, I can be flexible, especially if they give us a couple of days.
I could do Fridays like after 1:00 or so. Or Wednesday afternoons tend to be clear, but.
Actually, Wednesday afternoons are usually pretty good for me, too.
So should we look at Wednesday or Friday afternoons after 1:00, just to make it consistent? Does anybody have a problem with those two times?
Good.
No, it's good.
That's great. That was a good suggestion. Okay, Andy, those are the two days and times that we'd be available for them.
Sorry, what was the earliest time in the afternoon?
1:00. Or after, did you say after 1:00, Beth?
Yeah, 1:00 is fine, like 1:00.
Starting at 1:00, 1:00 to 5:00 on Wednesday or Friday.
Okay. I'm sure they'll come back with a couple of options, and Caitlin and I will just get them out to you, and you can attend at those times.
Great, thank you. All right, let me just follow up on a couple of things where I was still thinking about when we could have this zoning discussion. It's going to, I guess it's July 17, right?
That would make sense, I guess, yeah.
Tentatively.
We need a framework or something to look at or think about beforehand.
Well, yeah, we would provide you with that information before the meeting. We just, I just wanted to mention it tonight because we've had a sort of a change of course where people have gotten used to these online meetings. There's sort of a recognition now that if we want to get zoning amendments done, we need to do it within this format and get going rather than waiting for however.
Right. But the whole purpose of this discussion will be to take our input to craft when you go to writing those, so we want it done sooner rather than, we want this discussion organized in a way that we can be helpful to you. We don't want to just start from scratch. So what I heard Tanya say, background on 6C and rationale why we put it together and figure out if we want to keep it or amend it going forward. I can take care of that one. Others, Andy, you're, you know more about, so I'll let you decide which others are going to be on the agenda, but give us some framework, as someone said.
Can I, can I just ask a question about the 6C discussion? Would it make any sense, Andy, to get the person whose name I can't remember right now, who's with us on the zoning advisory committee, her input on, you know, whether we decide to get rid of the 6C?
Well, yeah, I mean, frankly, to be quite honest, Courtney, as a consultant, is not really going to be able to answer that question. So the, the planning board actually has the best experience with that particular ordinance, either myself, having worked here, or Bonnie, you know, and other members, I haven't been on the board for a long time. That's such a unique provision that's local that, first of all, I mean, her, her task was to do a rewrite of the ordinance and the structure of the ordinance primarily, sort of restructuring it to make a little bit more sense logically. But the 6C provision wasn't one of the tasks that she, her firm had. And it's such a unique provision that I think it's so particular to the planning board that you're probably the best ones to make the call as to, you know, working with us and work with the city council, of course, as to what to do about that and how to address, you know, the issue that Brick pointed out, do we want to keep some flexibility versus, you know, taking it out completely?
Okay. Yeah, I've talked to Diane already about it, the person who's been in the planning office longer than any of us. And we pulled up some, some early versions of it, and so there's some variations on the theme as it's evolved. I think it's been amended twice. So I'll get all that into a, you know, a reasonable format so you all can look at that before we come up for the discussion. I did have another question looking forward to June 17. We have a joint pub, this is how I got Lisa off of that one. We have a joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee. I know we're going to talk about downtown overlay district fences and site walls, and we have it buried somewhere in all our emails, but Andy will have to send it to us again. Short-term rental units is still on there, but my understanding is that Jim McCauley months ago said he didn't want to do that until he could do it face to face, and I haven't heard anything different. So is that going to be taken off, Andy?
Correct, that's my understanding as well. What I would recommend is, and I have talked to Council Agan about this, what I would expect is if it's amenable for the planning board and the planning and development committee members, that we discuss and hopefully bring out of that joint committee, a recommendation for adoption of the fences and site walls amendment, if there's further amendments, you know, to incorporate those. But we thought that might be able to be moved on after your discussion. The short-term rental units, like Bonnie said, I would expect that to be just a motion to continue that hearing possibly several months out. And frankly, depending on how long that goes, and I think for the reason Bonnie mentioned, it's a, you know, complex controversial ordinance because it involves a couple of different things going on simultaneously, and there's debate over it. If it's, if this hearing is continued for months on end, in this situation, it might make more sense to withdraw it and just resubmit and start the hearing process over again with a new notice or something. But yeah, I agree, it's not going to be discussed at great length at that public hearing because it's, I think the councils have also agreed that it makes sense to push that down a little bit and potentially get it to a physical meeting.
Would you mind, I think that's a really good idea for them to consider just removing it for now, if they're just going to keep continuing it for months on end. Give them the option to withdraw it and resubmit it.
Yeah, I think it would free up confusion over agendas and things like that if we're going to be in this situation for months. So I'll approach that subject with them, and either we'll have a motion to continue or we'll have a formal withdrawal of that one, and we can start the process over again at future date.
Okay. Anything else on anything from anybody? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who's that, Tanya?
Yes.
Second. Rick? Need your roll call. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Yeah, me too, yes. So, little change of plans tonight, but it's been good that we've been able to talk through these other things, so that was an opportunity. Good to see you all.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Hey, thank you, bye. Bye.